Testing.
There we go. I'll blast your eardrum. Um, the potential use of principal for an airport project. I just wanted you all to be aware of this and give you some time to talk to people in the airport, do due diligence, all the things, and let's bring it up again at the next meeting. Is that alright?
I make a motion, we table it then.
Second it.
Got a motion and a second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign, motion carries. Okay, Amanda.
Okay, um, good evening, everyone. Uh, so today I have two agenda items for you. The first is the normal quarterly report to cover performance of the Porter County investment portfolio. Um, I have good news to report there and continued good news in terms of an update here, um, through September. Um, so I'm, I'm gonna touch on that relatively briefly, leaving more time to cover the spending policy analysis. Um, so in that deck, what we'll be talking about is a revisit of the sort of evolution of the investment portfolio, the spending policy, performance, and then some analysis that Capital Cities was asked to complete on your behalf, looking at the impact of potential changes or hypothetical change to that spending policy. So that's where we'll spend more time. But first, looking at the first section of your book, you have the normal quarterly per- performance report. I'm gonna first look at the market overview on page two and what you see on the screen. So just setting the stage for the investment markets in the second quarter. So this is covering the second quarter ending June thirtieth. Um, markets were relatively mixed. In the middle chart there, you see the equity markets. Um, while there was some strong performance, um, continued strong performance of those mega capitalization tech names like Nvidia, Apple, Microsoft, Alphabet, et cetera. Um, other areas of the equity market struggled to keep pace. Sectors like energy, financials, consumer staples, materials were actually negative for the quarter. So equity markets were mixed and you can see that with the kind of different blue bar charts there indicating performance for the quarter across different styles. So again, this is just the broad market, setting the context for the market in which you were investing. At the bottom of the page, um, fixed income was also very difficult. It was kind of a tough market. Um, most styles or areas of fixed income struggled to end the quarter with much more than just a zero percent return. Um, that was really due to the fact that there continued to be at that time uncertainty around what the Fed might do with their eventual, which we now know, um, rate cut. Um, cash was still positive, shorter term fixed income was positive, but many of the broader styles of bonds across the US were pretty much flat for the quarter. So then looking ahead to your performance, your outcomes for the second quarter, I'm on page six. The good news is that despite this sort of, um, po hum environment, I'll call it, um, you did have a positive return of one point two percent for the quarter. That was a little bit behind your benchmark, so you trailed your benchmark for that one quarter by half a percent. However, year to date, so from January one through six thirty, you are outpacing your benchmark because you did have a strong first quarter return. So year to date, you're sitting at a six point seven percent return. And then for the last twelve month period, a very strong return, just shy of thirteen percent and a little bit higher than your benchmark. The market value, um, that you ended the quarter with was one hundred and eighty seven point three million. Um, so very strong. And then what I'd like to do is bring you up to date of where that stands as of, which day? As of yesterday. So as of yesterday, your new market value is one hundred and ninety six point nine million. We've seen really strong performance across all of your managers here in the, um, sort of rest of August and into September. Um, some of your equity managers that had been underperforming saw quite a bump here recently after the Fed cut, and many of your fixed income managers have performed very well. So your new year-to-date return, though, from January one through yesterday is now twelve point one percent. Um, so very strong performance. In terms of, um, just sort of what was contributing, what was causing, um, sort of detracting, um, overall, very positive for performance. Um, your equity exposure contributed to the bottom line. Um, but on a relative basis, many of your active equity managers did not have high exposures to those mega cap tech names. On the other hand, you do have passive exposure to those names and we know that. So your active managers offset that or diversify it. So your active managers tended to lag on the equity side. On the other hand, your fixed income managers in a very tough fixed income market have outpaced their peers in the broad market. So we're very happy with the overall performance, not just the twelve plus percent number, but how your underlying managers are contributing. So any questions there? I've got some more, um, summarized detail on performance that's also part of the next deck. Um, but wanted to be relatively brief there, good news, and wanted to leave time for that other analysis.
Market's terrible, economy's terrible. Not, not now.
Okay. Um, you want me to kick this off or does anyone else wanna?
Yeah.
Amanda, listen, I got a question real quick. Do we wanna just for an interest of time, do we wanna just talk real quick about the termination recommendation? Recommendation?
Sure.
Do that and then, cause I don't wanna have to do it at the end and?
Oh, sure, so.
Get that done and then we?
Thank you, Brad, I appreciate that.
Does anybody wanna make a motion on this or talk about?
I make a motion.
Second.
Got a motion and a second, all those in favor of the termination recommendation of Western Asset Total Return and strain? Say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign, motion carries.
Thank you.
If I missed that.
Where's that money go now?
To Loomis Strategic Alpha, the other manager acting in the exact same.
Thank you.
So it was a one for one.
So I think everybody knows that we've got some, uh, revenue issues that the council's dealing with at budget time for next year. And so some people brought it forward that they wanted to discuss what it would look like to either raise our spending policy or potentially use some principal to, to kind of Band-Aid that situation for next year. I think that's a fair way of putting it, so, um.
When you speak of principal, are you talking about the one ninety seven with that whole thing considered principal in this conversation?
Okay, sure. So, um, you know, I'll set the stage by saying this is exactly what you should expect your consultant to be able to do, is to run this type of analysis so that you all as a governing board have the proper kind of details in front of you to make informed decisions. Um, so from my perspective, my goal was to remind you?
Real quick, everybody, this is the, under the tab with the single dot.
So my, my goal, or our team's goal with this was to remind you of sort of the history of this portfolio, um, kind of tell you how it's done. And then we have the software to actually run the analysis on these different scenarios and what the overall impact might be to future spending and future asset value. Now, the possibilities of running analysis on this are limitless. So we had to boil it down to just a couple things, um, to sort of allow the message to be clearer, but just know that we could run analysis on really any type of scenarios. Um, so on page three, um, just wanted to remind you all, kind of go back in time a little bit. This portfolio, um, was inceptioned, it began in mid two thousand sixteen. At that time, the guiding, um, statutory constraints were, um, a little bit more stringent than what they are now. Um, also at that time, the board had more of a conservative bias to start out. Uh, let me say that differently. The board had a bias to start out more conservatively than what the statutory code would allow in terms of the risk-return profile of the portfolio. So to put that differently, um, the board decided on an asset allocation that was forty percent equity, which was a little less than what was actually allowable as a way to just get this rolling, start to see how it would work, um, and, and take that conservative approach. At that time, the spending policy was very unique, um, but it was guided by statutory code. It was to transfer up to five percent or, you know, uh, cash out up to five percent of the principal at the end of the year if the investment earnings were greater than five percent. If investment earnings were, um, zero, there would be no distribution of cash in that year. Um, so that's a lot different than what other foundations sort of do. Um, so that was complicated and eventually led to new statutory code, which gave this board more flexibility to develop a different spending policy. So at the June two thousand twenty-one meeting, you did just that. You developed a spending policy that was based on a moving average of the principal times a percent, in this case, three point two five percent. At the same time, uh, having a few years under your belts in terms of seeing how this worked, um, you did make the decision to increase the equity exposure to fifty-five percent. So those were the two key changes sort of in the history of this portfolio. There've been smaller changes sort of under the hood, but those are the big ones. Um, overall, the guiding goals have always been the same. And they're also our goals as your consultant, as your fiduciary. And that is to preserve purchasing power into perpetuity. So to put that differently, you want to protect the principal with inflation for a very long time. Um, you wanna adhere to all requirements, meet or exceed county budgetary need, and take the least risk possible to get the return that you need to do all of that. Any questions? Kind of on, that's, that's what we're all here to do, day in and day out. So, page four, you know, Capital Cities, we consult to about fifty-five different clients, all institutional, meaning we're talking to boards, we're not talking to families. Um, so, you know, these clients, while they're all different, I can usually say, okay, this group of community foundations looks kind of similar. This group of pension plans looks kind of similar. You know, this group of university endowments is similar. Well, Porter County is really sort of in a group by itself. Um, the fact that you have this statutory, excuse me, code governing your asset allocation and your spending does make you unique. So what, what we've done here, just a quick illustration, we have the median normal sort of asset allocation for a foundation in the US as well as a pension plan in the US. Um, what you'll see here, I've kept the colors consistent with Porter County on the left. So you'll see that the blue and the orange, which is equity, is really not that different from Porter to the median foundation, the median pension. What's really different is how you make up the balance of that. So Porter County has a forty-five percent allocation to fixed income and cash. These other, um, institutional investors are kind of taking the, um, approach of typically having half that amount of fixed income with the balance in higher return-seeking instruments like private equity hedge funds and real estate. So I did wanna just kind of remind you that this is a different portfolio than a, a normal foundation. And there are a couple other things that make you unique, which I'll touch on here in a second.
This would be more conservative, correct?
Absolutely.
Yeah.
And it's served the county very well. Page five, you know all about performance, but I thought this might be a nice segue to tie in what you've earned with how you should think about forward-looking spending. So first, this is just basic info. Over the since inception time period, you've had an average annual return of six point six percent. You've beat your benchmark on an average annual basis by half a percent. That compounds too, to your benefit. Um, so you've outperformed there. Equity has been very additive on an absolute basis. As I already said, your fixed income managers have far exceeded the broad fixed income market. So strong, strong news to report there. But on the next page, I'm gonna tie this to your spending policy and also bring in inflation.
Can I just ask a quick question? Your benchmark based on our asset value?
Absolutely, yes. So the question was, is the benchmark based on your asset allocation? Your underlying ba-, uh, excuse me, benchmark to which we compare your performance is a basket of securities that basically match or show what you would look like if everything was passively managed. Okay, so page six, there's a lot here. I wanna make sure you follow kind of our thinking on this. In a perfect world, a foundation would create or, um, decide on a spending policy that preserves future purchasing power, ensures future growth, and also accommodates inflation. Um, now, so, so this kind of equation that you see, it's a very simplified illustration. It's not perfect. There are things that I can tell you aren't wrong with this, like this doesn't include compounding and things like that. But on paper, this is basically what you're trying to do. So what I've done here is plug in some relevant numbers for Porter County. That's your six point six percent average annual return, your three point two five percent spending rate. Inflation, this is a real number. Since inception of this portfolio, inflation has been three point four percent on an average annual basis. In the early years, it was very low, but in the, you know, two thousand twenty, it, it got much higher. So that has been detrimental to all investors in the US. And then very importantly, contributions are zero. Of course, they're zero, we know that, but this isn't normal. Most foundations have contributions, they have donations, they have fundraising. So you do not have the benefit of that, given just the nature of this foundation. In the end, what you'd like to see is that that gray box has a positive number. Here you see it's ever so slightly negative. I'm not worried about that. That's basically showing that your return has allowed you to meet your spending needs and accommodate inflation without eroding the principal. That's what you're trying to do. Any questions on, on that? Okay, so now the forward-looking stuff. There are a lot of assumptions here, and I'm happy to go into any of these sort of details. And we've got detail in the appendix to, to point to. But overall, basically, we have the software, this is not something I didn't expel, this is absolutely using software, where we can project what might happen to your future principal and your future spending amounts by tweaking certain things. So what we did with this analysis was we kept everything else the same. Like, we kept your asset allocation the same. Um, but what we changed was your spending policy. So we're showing three point two five, excuse me, three point two five percent, because as just a reference, that we, it's what you have now. We also are showing you what would happen if you kept the three point two five percent, but you immediately pulled out twenty-five million dollars in principal. And then finally, what if you just raised it to five percent, you know, long-term? So that, these are the scenarios that I'm gonna talk about here and tell you kind of what happens if you do that in a normal market environment. Okay? So first on page eight, if you're more of a text person, where you'll wanna focus, if you're more of a chart person, you'll wanna look at pages nine and ten. This is all very intuitive, I don't think anyone will be surprised by this, but I, let me explain a couple things. Again, we're thinking about what these changes do to future assets and future spending. So the three point two five percent spending rate results in steadily increasing spending over time because your principal balance is growing. So basically, your portfolio can support, your portfolio return can support three point two five percent. So principal does not erode. You know, that's what the projections show. So you're multiplying that three point two five percent times a higher number as time goes on. The higher spending rate, five percent, does the opposite. In early years, you would have more to spend, but eventually the erosion of principal means that you're multiplying the five percent times a shrinking number. If you were to take that principal immediately, here we're just illustrating it with twenty-five million, of course, that impacts your asset values in the, immediately. So your starting point is twenty-five million dollars less on your principal. But eventually, because you're keeping the three point two five percent in that scenario, you still have spending grow over time. So those are just some broad takeaways. You can see all of this on page nine. So the blue line, okay, let me explain the chart, sorry. So the vertical axis is dollars of annual spending. So right now, the blue line, the three point two five percent suggests that one year from now, your annual spend should be, you know, five point seven million, I'm estimating on the chart. So the X-axis is time, it's years from now. We go out fifty years here because as a foundation, as a board, talking about perpetuity, I'm not exactly sure what number that is on the chart, but we kind of landed on fifty years. So you can kind of see what happens. The green line is the taking the twenty-five million out immediately. So you see, first of all, though, let me explain, you've got the twenty-five million in your pocket, but you're still applying the three point two five percent normal rate. So that normal three point two five percent dips because your principal has dipped dramatically. But eventually, you see that that starts to grow over time because the three point two five percent rate is sustainable, though you took twenty-five million out. The orange line with the five percent, you have much higher spending for many years, many years that's above the other two lines. I mean, what, twenty-six years, you're spending more? But then it really declines because you're eroding the principal of the asset.
Okay.
And it's not adjusted for inflation.
This is.
This is adjusted.
This is, yes, I'm glad you said that.
Yeah, I, I read this whole thing, I understand it a hundred percent. The only thing missing, I'm not looking at fifty years, cause when I first started throwing out solutions, I was throwing out maybe twenty-five million, which I thought was a good solution. And, and here, this is actually better than raising it to five percent, I understand that.
Yep.
But what I'm looking for is a short-term solution, one to three years. So if I was to pass anything tonight or even make a motion, it's gonna be, I look at raising from three point two five to five percent for two years, starting, you know, next year to twenty-seven, so that's?
Yep.
Yeah.
Yep.
It, it.
And that's where the, so one thing with the software, a limitation, um, is the inability to change it, change the percent.
Right.
Um, so by virtue of what you see on this page, Cap Cities has no sort of, um, opinion on which options you should be considering as a board. Trying to show you more the dynamic, the relative dynamics of taking principal out versus raising.
I, no, I think, you're exactly right. I think if we, we're, if we were all on board, the twenty-five million would make sense. We could take that money, invest it. It, it makes more sense than raising it from three point two five to five if we're doing it long-term.
Right.
The chart shows it, I get that.
Right.
But if we're going to do this only for one or two years in a, you know, a, a motion, um, it would be, in my opinion, easier to go from three point two five to five and then at the end of twenty twenty-seven or twenty twenty-six, it goes back down to three point two five percent.
Yep.
So that's.
Yep, and I, I have some things that I can show you that will at least give you some clarity around that in a roundabout way.
Cause quite, the, the reason why we're bringing this up, I'm bringing this up is, um, in my opinion, we need some short-term capital until we decide to actually look at our revenues and our spending and see as a whole where our county's at.
Yep.
With, with, with money. I know this, this is definitely a Band-Aid, I understand it's a Band-Aid, but it's a Band-Aid until we can get all our facts and figures compiled and the council can make a, I think hopefully, an educated decision going forward, so.
Yep, I agree. Can I kind of show you what's?
Yep.
And then I'll, I, I have a way to sort of address something that you said too. Um, let me just kind of walk through this real quick so you see this other chart. Um, this next chart is projected real assets, so incorporating inflation for these same three scenarios. So this is just showing you in a normal market environment, and I should mention, that assumes two point five percent inflation. So if anything kind of goes haywire, good or bad, it wouldn't affect these numbers, but I had to pick just something normal to show you. Um, so this shows you potential real assets over time. Um, not surprisingly, the three point two five percent takes the least out of the portfolio, so it grows the most. The five percent takes the most out, so it declines the most. Um, what was interesting to me is that at the nine-year mark, that twenty-five million dollar scenario, um, starts to look better than the five percent scenario. Um, similarly, if you were to take less out immediately or if you were only to raise the spending policy for a short time, it would look, it would do the same thing. Um, so I think we can sort of derive in some ways what would happen to that line.
Oh, and?
But no matter what you do, that line is gonna be lower in the future, no matter what you do.
Absolutely.
So, you have to realize that the money that's coming out right now at three and a quarter percent, it will be less in the future and we will not have as much money to fund whatever we're funding out of that three and a quarter percent.
That's exactly right.
Right, so at the end of fifty years, we're at three, say, three hundred, three hundred million dollars and our, and if we're still at three point two five percent, we're at nine million bucks in fifty years, you know, our spending.
Correct.
It actually be more than that, eleven million dollars.
Yes, yeah, 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 sorry, I was.
I gotta wait fifty years to spend eleven million dollars where, you know, I understand Barb's point, but in this, I'm just, I'm talking to the whole board. Um, quite frankly, I think when people in the county see two hundred million dollars, um, you know, and, and we're looking for money, I don't think they're worried about fifty years out.
Well, except for next year, you will have less money to pay out.
No, we won't.
If you're taking out more money than the three and a quarter percent, you will have less money because it, it does eat into principal. You cannot raise expenses and not raise and not raise revenue.
Barb, I unders, I understand that, but when we're talking one year out of two hundred million dollars, I promise you, three million dollars, you're, that's a, that's a, a, a blur. I understand it goes down. So you went from two hundred to one seventy-seven, but if you're looking at the, at the taxpayers and we're looking at funding issues for roads, we are underfunding in roads, our ambulance is going up, we have IT, that's not even to mention raises for employees, by the way, going forward because the, and, and the roads is huge and I'll be honest with you, since I've been on this council, I've seen our road funding and I'm embarrassed that we haven't put more money towards our roads, absolutely embarrassed. That's why I believe, taking this money to, to do a Band-Aid for one year, which is three million dollars, it's gonna be two point nine million dollars out of two hundred million dollars, hold on a second, I think is the right thing to do for the council to buy us time to be able to actually look and, and, and get all the information that we need to make an educated, educated decision. Cause I don't think it's fair for anybody on this council to be shell, shell gaming money around.
Right, I agree.
And, and then, you know, not getting wrecked information.
I just want, and, and Matt Vesely can attest to this, is that foundations design this not, they design it for it to be, you know, a zero-sum game. That if you take the amount that you're generating on average over five years, you take into account inflation, you wanna solve for what is that withdrawal rate that you can safely do so that that amount that you can take out into perpetuity, adjusted for inflation, is consistent. As soon as you take out more than that, it will affect future withdrawals, it has to.
That Barb, it will, but we were just at one seventy-five, not too long ago, we're at one ninety-five, it all depends.
I know, and that's.
At twelve percent.
But what?
Get that over time, we're gonna get six point six percent, I understand.
Right, so today that value might be, but what we look at is our five-year averages. That is one data point, that is not, that's not a five-year average, so.
One of twenty, right.
So here's a couple things too. Number one, what are the other options if we don't do this? But number two, if we move it up to five percent for one year, that can be accomplished with a simple majority of this board. If we use principal, that fires ten out of ten.
Right.
So I just wanted to get that out there. Um, and, and council people, what are the other options?
And that's what I'm asking. I'm asking here, you know, I've been on the council two years, I'm asking for solutions. I'm willing to put out solutions, if, yeah, good, bad, or otherwise, but we, we don't have a lot of solutions left until we actually start getting the numbers back, the figures back, and we can edu, you know, look at everything educationally and, and make a decision that, you know, I would imagine next year, hopefully, right?
I would be okay with, um, moving the spending up to five percent for one year to give you guys some time to figure out what to do for twenty twenty-six. to give you guys some time to figure out what to do for twenty twenty-six.
I think that would be very, that would be very helpful because we are, uh, really digging in the weeds on our, uh, right now, the general fund is, is not gonna, is not gonna sustain our needs. Uh, but until we look at some, uh, other options which we are discussing, I think this would be a huge, a huge help for, uh, uh, you know, we wouldn't have to raise any taxes this year, um, which, you know, but it's something that we are really looking at, we're looking at hard because we're, you know, we're in some challenging times. You know, I think the one-year, um, increase would, would really be sufficient at this time for us to really, you know, uh, uh, we've got some work to do.
It would definitely give us options, it would definitely help us out, there's no question.
Was that a motion that you made?
No.
I'll make a motion that we raise our spending rate from three point two five percent to five percent, starting one-one of twenty-five, ending twelve-thirty-one of twenty-five. But they wanna go to full suck. Knowing what that number will be, right?
It's just one year?
One year.
Policy.
Correct.
Yeah, and I, you know, I'm hearing, the general fund's not in trouble, um, it's not. Our, our roads spending has gone up probably doubled over the last, I don't know, three or four years. Is it enough? Probably not, but it's doubled over the last, you know, three or four years.
And we've switched a lot to chip and seal over payments.
Yeah, it, to say that we're, we're in dire trouble is just really inaccurate. Um, but to keep up that pace of, you know, increasing the road funding and, and try to catch up, yeah. Um, to figure out ambulance service, I don't know if it's completely us just paying more or not looking at other options, right, we've talked about that, I've been putting solutions.
And you know we're going through, and you know, personally, we're doing some things that hopefully could bear some fruit in the future.
Yeah, and I, I think, you know, IT stuff, I think we're working on, on that kind of stuff, but it, I don't think we're up here like, you know, the sky's falling, if we don't do this, we're gonna shut the doors down. But I think to continue at the level of services and, and, and try to, yeah, we, roads are probably one of the last things we haven't completely funded. We've been working on rebuilding for a while, stormwater, bridges, all of it's, you know, funded, we've been doing a lot. Uh, but insurance costs, you know, they just, they're going up, right, they have been, we've gotta catch that up, the roads, yes.
Our insurance is actually pretty good, we're spending about the same thing we did ten years ago.
Yeah, we finally caught it back up after it, it dropped, it probably, yeah, so. We're, but to take care of our employees, to, yeah, to maybe try to catch up on roads, you know, maybe we do need some capital infusion and to catch up on the health insurance, take care of our employees, but, uh, you know, to say what we're investing in roads is embarrassing, we've really doubled it over the last four years. Could we do better? Yes, we could do better in a lot, always, but, but yeah, I think to not run out hastily and raise fees or taxes, to have the right conversations, this is, to me, you know, if it's a Band-Aid or whatever, but it's, it buys us a year or whatever, two years, to properly talk to the general public and see what we need to do. Um, but, you know, hearing like, the sky's falling, that, that, that's not, that's not true, but also, I, we've brought it up a couple of times, the finding a, a better return than our fixed incomes also, while we're doing this, maybe, you know, the, um, real estate investment, we keep kind of not ignoring that whole option. I mean, I, I know fixed incomes looks like they had a pretty decent return in the last, um, it was a year I just glanced at, but traditionally in our portfolio, they're, they're not really performing, you know.
But some of it is, I mean, it's out of our hands, it's legislative.
We can do alt, alternatives, right, we, we could put a certain percentage in our.
Out of fixed income, right?
Uh, I, I believe you can't, um, but I'd wanna, I, I don't, I don't.
Yeah.
Buck the cuff on that, I don't have the code memorized, I'm looking at Scott. Um, so I believe the statutory code specifies what your equity limit is, but, but here's the thing.
Fixed income.
Let me, let me explain, the, um, alternatives, like, most, a lot of alternatives have a component of equity. So we would, it wouldn't just be funded from your fixed income. You'd still have to make sure somehow that you could reasonably keep your overall equity exposure under the fifty-five percent.
The question is, can we swap out fixed income for alternative options? And we're right at fifty-five percent on equities.
Well, some, it depends, like hedge funds absolutely have equity, private equity is equity, but like real estate, depending on the vehicle you bought, you could absolutely buy real estate that's not equity. Um, we've approached you with things like that in the past, at a different time, with a different group of people, so I'm not, you know, always open to doing that again, um, but in the past, that had been tabled. I mean, turns are not poor.
No, but, but, but.
Fixed incomes, I think we could make more money, if you, I mean, I just look at this chart, right, and you look at the REITs, whatever, you know, it's, that's the real estate. If you look at that compared to just kind of look around for the fixed income too, I, I think real estate does traditionally perform.
Higher risk, yes.
So.
Higher risk.
It is, it is higher risk, there's no doubt.
I don't think it's been that long, this particular group has an alternative explanation, I believe we did it earlier.
We, uh, we did, Scott.
It is much more complicated than we're used to. And the last time we had the presentation, that's why we just all said, thank you.
Yeah.
So, I understand that we can do alternatives, however, we have to be mindful of what we are, what we do, how long we stay, and how much contiguous, how much continuous strain we have, because this portfolio is obviously controlled by the state statute. And right now, it's some fairly easy things in that world. And that's being explained to us, uh, in that world. Alternatives take us in a different direction, it's an option, but that would take an additional layer from all of us involved to get into that and to be able to make sure we knew what was happening and how to express it to the ones that followed.
And alternatives tend to have a hi, a higher risk profile than equities, so.
And I'm just saying, we're, we're looking at, you know, inflation, we might lose a half a percent if we take it out for a year, but how much, how, how many half percents have we left on the table by not pursuing alternatives to it, so.
Yeah, we're figuring.
The other thing too, Jeremy, honestly, if, and I'm, it is what it is, but it's not Laura's fault, because this is how we say, we don't have enough time. If we really wanted to look at alternatives, we, we need an hour meeting and do a couple of these to educate ourselves and to get comfortable. We can't do that in a half hour.
No, I'm not.
Not giving ourselves the proper time to get.
I'm not suggesting, but I, I brought it up last meeting, I think we were, look at, we're worried about, well, if we pull it out for a year, we might lose, you know.
Might be able to get a little bit here and there with real estate or whatever.
I, I just really think, I'll keep bringing it up, we should really take a look at it, you know, as we pave down this path.
We got a motion.
That's all.
So we've got a motion and a second on the floor, right, we did have a second.
Mike seconded it.
Um, so the motion was to do, move the spending policy to five percent for one year. Um, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed, same sign, motion carries. Okay, um, is there anything else anyone wants to discuss?
I know, I know that we tabled the airport, but when I got that letter, I thought that was intriguing because before, before I got elected, I always asked a certain commissioner, if, say, a school district needed a short-term loan, two to four million dollars for, say, a couple of years, couldn't they borrow it from the foundation and pay a fixed interest rate, you know, cause then they're saving, um, council fees, bond fees, and so I think it is a good idea going forward.
I would bring up, though, if we open that door, we become a bank, every community's gonna, they're gonna want low.
Right, no.
I, I would really hesitate to look at.
Sure, it's five forty, our.
Yeah, Hammond, I think.
Let's table that, like, we intend.
I agree.
Give it some thought and.
Motion to adjourn.
Next meeting, um, and we have an approval of claim.
Oh, sorry.
Um, Capital Cities, second quarter, sixteen thousand two hundred and fifty.
Motion to approve.
Second, second.
Got a motion and a second, all those in favor signify by aye.
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 Close sign, motion carries. And, and do we have public comment, or anyone who wanted to speak today?
I know Larry wants to say.
I would just.
Okay.
Matt, are we crazy to think about real estate? I, I mean, as an alternative to some fixed incomes to get.
No, I think it's always good to explore, I mean, you know, relative risk return. I think the most important thing is to understand that it's intended to be a perpetual thing.
Yeah, right.
Short-term decisions and changing investments is not generally what a foundation body does. The other thing I would suggest is that that change, the impact of that change, if positive, on spending would be minimal because it's a twenty-quarter rolling average. So it would take a while for anything to really start to benefit from spend. Um, and, and by the time that starts to roll, then we're talking about, maybe we should give it fixed income. It's, it's dangerous to try to time.
Yeah, very much is.
Yeah, and I'm not suggesting time it, we, we've had this conversation a little bit, but, you know, for the long term, just diversifying a little bit more. It, you know.
Yep.
I think it's something that should always be on the table to explore and understand.
Alright, anything else, do we have a motion to adjourn?
Next meeting.
Motion to adjourn.
Next meeting, when can you guys meet next?
Someone second.
Probably December, right?
Before.
When's your December council meeting?
Uh, we usually don't have one in this.
I, we usually combine it, we'll have to discuss.
Early, like, December.
Yeah, what we traditionally have done the last couple of years is, because of Thanksgiving, we haven't had a late November one. We've done it at the beginning of December, so I don't. I don't, I think that's the whole point, you know, around Thanksgiving.
I will not be here, I know.
Yeah.
That's Thanksgiving.
That's Christmas, I think.
Yeah, but you wanna try Thanksgiving?
December third, December tenth.
I, I know the council president's there, I, I mean, like I said, I know what we traditionally have done.
Not a Friday.
How about December tenth?
That's a Tuesday.
The twos.
The second.
Sounds good.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, second.
Alright, so that works.
Yeah.
December tenth, five o'clock on.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.